To order the room in the Cotton County Planning Commission. First of all, business, we have minutes from our previous meeting on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. The motion to approve those as presented.
Tell me your motion.
Second.
The move by Hayes, second by Gary, to approve the minutes from Cotton County Planning Commission meeting, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? If there are none, all is in favor, we will say aye.
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 All same? Motion carries. Welcome, everyone. Today, we're here today for a meeting in the Cotton County Planning Commission to discuss a nuisance ordinance violation. And we will be going with ordinance twenty eight of Cotton County ordinance. Section twenty six is where it's located. For the record, it's our custom to have everyone in the room introduce themselves. My name is Phil Harder from Midway Township.
Norv Boland, Cotton County Commissioner.
Alex Schultz, planning zoning.
Kerry Plumb, zoning lawyer.
James Grudel.
Kathy Grill, this way.
I'm Cindy Reed.
John Reed.
Kevin Dorflessen, Hollister Trucker.
Perry Snook.
Nick Anderson, neighbor and county attorney.
Gary Olson, planning commission.
Freddie Hanson, planning commission.
Okay, thank you all for being here today. With that, I will call to order the public hearing for nuisance ordinance violation. I ask Alex Schultz to read the legal notice, please.
A nuisance violation has been issued for the junkyard in the twenty seventh section of Dale Township, Cowan County, Minnesota. This is in accordance with Cowan County ordinance number twenty eight, section twenty six, and will require a public hearing to consider abatement of any nuisance on the property. The estimated cost is three thousand dollars for landfill fees, eight thousand dollars per man hour fees, and five hundred dollars per perp fees, a total of eleven thousand five hundred dollars. The address to the property is four sixty oh three two Cowan Road twenty two, Wyndham, Minnesota, five six one oh one, car's number zero five zero two seven zero four zero one. The action proposal today is removal of visible tires, accumulation of household appliances we dispose of properly, accumulation of lights and containers with refrigerant gas we dispose of properly, and any other items deemed a nuisance discovered during the abatement process. A public hearing to consider said nuisance violation will be held by the Cotton County Planning Commission on January tenth, twenty twenty three, at one thirty P M. The hearing will be held at the basement in the Law Enforcement Center, nine oh two Fifth Avenue, Wayne, Minnesota. For any questions, please call five oh seven eight three two eight two eight seven.
Okay, thanks, everyone. At this time, we will have a conversation with the Grunwald party, and at a later point in the meeting, we will open the meeting for public comment if anyone would like to make a public comment at that time. At the time, public comment, all questions and comments would be directed toward the chair and not toward the Grunwald party. So this time, I guess, we'd like to hear from the Grunwalds.
We were cleaning everything up, hauling tires out, we hauled all the refrigerators out and appliances that I go off. But people been dropping stuff off at our place and we don't know nothing about it. And we, like I say, when you're fully in fifty hours a week, and sometimes you don't have a chance to get in and do everything to do at one time. And we did make progress on it quite a bit.
That was with the appliances so far?
Appliances, and we've been getting rid of some tires and stuff like that. But we got everything cleaned up, towards the front a little bit, everything, and we've been working on it. And I was gonna get Scott Binker to come and dig a hole so we can just burn the burnable stuff, not the tires, not the TVs, and stuff like that, but just burn the wood and the garbage.
With the appliances that you're removing, are you taking those to the landfill?
No, no, we were taking them to Hilltop.
Okay.
Hilltop takes them for nothing, and they dispose of them the right way. And everything.
So you're not just moving them to another property?
No, no, no.
They're the same way?
They're going to us place where they take care of everything as possible way.
And the tires?
And tires go up to landfill. But like I say, with us, with me working on that, it's hard to always get in there when the landfill's open to haul stuff out. But we are making a progress. And we got a system where the lights go in one spot, because that's gotta go to landfill in a different spot and stuff. You can't just... And a lot of that stuff just dropped off, and we can't do nothing about it. There's other people that was bringing garbage out there, and we're just dropping it off.
But why are they dropping it at your place?
I have no idea. I suppose it's a convenient place to back in and just dump it off. We have appliances and everything dumped out there too, but we try to haul them out to get rid of them right away.
You were notified back, I believe the first was in August? Is that when the?
Yes, I think it was.
September maybe? And I think part of the reason we're here today is you didn't reply to that letter?
Yes, we called, we called you.
You did, okay.
We called, I called the number that was on there.
And did you speak to someone then?
Yes, I spoke to somebody, and they said, try to do the best you can and clean it up, and that's what we were trying to do. And as I can say, we're going forward cleaning it up, but just not fast enough for what you guys want done.
I think that response was a couple of years ago, since we redid the ordinance, I resents down, and I haven't gotten any contact yet.
Okay, in the last three or four months, you didn't?
Correct.
How long has the junk been there, tires and everything?
It's been there pretty much my whole family and that, just my dad lived out there and stuff. So it's just not my stuff, it's my brother's stuff in that too. And we were hauling junk out and everything to clean everything up.
Are you salvaging something there that you're trying to make some money out of?
No, no, we're just cleaning, my brother was, that was his income when he was living out there, is junking and stuff. I just took this over the last, when he passed away. And we started cleaning things up, but it took a while, because we were cleaning all the junk up, like the iron and everything else. We're cleaning out, we took a bunch of the vehicles out, and we got rid of all the vehicles. There's a couple of vehicles out there and stuff, but we're slowly getting at it, where it's, you know, going progress in it. And we've been trying to, whenever we get a chance to, we try to make a load of junk to haul out, like tin and wire and all that to haul out.
I think we're here today, you know, your key word is that you're slowly moving, making progress, and that's why we're here, is because the progress, and you'd made the statement, it's not happening as fast as what
You guys want.
the ordinance needs it to be done, to clean it up. And that's why it continues to attract other people backing up and dumping it off.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't look like it's a place that wouldn't accept that kind of stuff. And so that's why we need it cleaned up for environmental concerns, and that's really what it comes down, is the environment.
Yeah.
Do you have a plan of your own that would speed up what you're trying to do?
All I can do is, for the tires and stuff, if we do it, all we can do is maybe try to haul out the loaded tires a week, and on Saturday, when the landfill's open, try to take a bigger load and stuff to the landfill. And stuff, because sometimes when we go to landfill, sometimes it's not open on Saturday. And I figure if I can get Binker in there to dig a hole, and we do everything the proper way, just burning wood and garbage only, because we have a permit for burning out there and stuff, and do, and try to do as much as we can to try to make a faster progress. And that way, maybe I can have Binker, you know, go through stuff and push it in with his backhoe and stuff to kind of clean stuff up so we can burn it.
So when you haul tires in on Saturday, are you able to haul in fifteen, twenty tires?
Oh, we can haul in, by Mr. Boss's equipment, we can haul in maybe fifty, sixty tires.
Because, I mean, your location to the landfill is now five minutes.
Yeah. But the picture that you guys took overhead is not the same picture it looks like now.
This picture here, you're talking about, a picture like?
Well, I can't see.
Yeah, I can.
Here, I got an extra.
You show us what we have.
Yep.
I'm assuming these are the pictures that they were taking in September, maybe?
These are the same pictures that were taken in that, a while back. And I did drive past it today, and I mean, it's tough, it's snow covered, but there is a little, even more progress than there was when those pictures were taken.
Yeah, see, we-
So he's definitely not lying or anything like that?
No, 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 but like I say, it was a lot of work and that, but we did make a lot of progress in that. And like I say, we were still trying to make progress as we went, but, you know, we could only do what?
How long do you anticipate this taking you to go?
I'm hoping to have it done by fall.
How about spring?
What? Well, I'm, like I say, we gave as much as we could get in the spring to get it done, yes, haul as much as we can out. But you gotta look at my time for work, that I put in fifty, sometimes sixty hours a week, and that, just to work for negligence construction, and sometimes we're not home every day either, every weekend. But like I say, I can only say it's, try to get as much as I can, and like I say, you guys can come out and progress it, and then come out and look if you guys want to, to see how we're doing. Because like I say, we want to try to make as much clear and proper way to dispose of stuff as legal as possible.
Are you able now with the snow there to do anything out there?
No, no, drift would have blows in from the north. We get eight to eight, seven, eight to nine foot drifts out there sometimes, that comes right over by the house and everything, and drifts raining where the road is. So basically, you, person won't be able to do anything about spring, once it starts to thaw, we can get that stuff.
And I'm thinking, following up Gary's line of thinking that by June first, three fourths of that should be cleaned up. And if you're thinking it'd be done by fall, I would say, you know, by even the first of August, it should be done. You know? And that's generous. The tires, there's a lot of tires in this picture, and I don't know if you, you know, you've done some work, you said, I don't know if you've done tires from when this picture was taken.
Yeah.
Some of the tires are gone, and some of the appliances that are here are gone.
Appliances gone, there may be one or two out there that got the big drop off. But other than that, all appliances are gone and stuff that I know of. But like I say, I can't say now what's in the back, that people dropped off when we essentially started cleaning.
Have you had people help you with the cleaning?
Well, I got friends that help load stuff and that, and then sometimes we get to use, the boss's Bob had to help load stuff, like some of this heavy steel and stuff, and try to get rid of, you know, like the vehicles and stuff like that.
Well, the vehicles won't, the place on seventy one that you mentioned, won't they come pick them up?
On seventy one, yeah. Hilltop, I know Jacob well. But he can load the pickup, but he can't load that big motorhome on there, because his truck is not big enough.
So what are you anticipating doing with the motorhome?
Well, it'll have to be tore down and hauled out to be away.
Well, this is the first time that we are having the ordinance to enforce this. I mean, there's been communication going on with you for several years to clean this up, and then finally, we were able to put teeth into it, and now we finally get response. You know, you see the fees of eleven thousand five hundred potentially as to what it's gonna cost the county to do it, and those would be reassessed to your real estate taxes, is how it would go. And then that's the option, and we have the right to do that. The other option is to say, okay, we'll work with you, we'll give you, you know, spring plus a few months to get this addressed. Otherwise, and we'll put a drop dead date on it, that if it hasn't been done by, what's left is gonna get assessed. I'm thinking that's kind of the direction that we're gonna be going, our county attorney just had to step out, but that's, I'm thinking, the direction that, and that's why we're meeting today, for us as a committee, to come up with a plan of action, either to just, when spring comes, we're gonna clean it up, and you're gonna get assessed for it, or try to work with you.
I'm hoping that you can try to work with us, because I can say, I mean, we'll try to, like I say, I can't promise you nothing, but I want to do the best I can. You know, I can't promise you everything's gonna be.
The option is eleven thousand dollars, and so if you have, if you hire somebody to help you for a thousand dollars, that's ten percent of what the cost could have been. And I'm thinking that, you know, I realize and I get the idea that your time is limited, and so you maybe, for a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars, you hire somebody to help you get this done and addressed in a really timely fashion versus the option of, you know, and do it for ten percent of the cost. And hopefully, if it gets cleaned up, it will get recognized that, no, we're not to be dumping stuff here anymore.
Yes.
That, I'm not, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, I don't know where the rest of them are. Well, I think too, at that point, if it is cleaned up and then dumping is happening, then you can, you know, call the sheriff or whoever, and at least then the county would know that it's not your issue.
Yeah.
We have, we have, you know, proof that, you know, came from an outside source, and so then, we look at it differently. It wouldn't be necessarily their nuisance problem that they created for you. My goal is to work with you, that's why I'm glad that you're here today to have this conversation, and so we can work with you and not give you unlimited time, but we'll, you know, fill it with a sufficient amount of time to get it cleaned up.
Well, thank you.
But I think before we, we're not done here.
No, no.
Before we move on, I want to open this up to public comment, and if you make comment, we'd ask that you present your name first, and then any comment you would have, so. Anyone wanna make a comment on this? Yes?
I'm Cindy Reed. Do they have any kind of signs up that say personal property, no dumping?
We have signs up, so don't just hurt on it, that anybody going out there will be prosecuted if we catch you.
Like no trespassing, that type of sign, okay. How did you?
I'm from on the house. My name is Susan Swenson, I live up the road, and this has been going on way, way, way too long. I live with Lloyd Pfeifer.
Lloyd passed away three weeks ago or something like that. He stopped me five, six times in the last year complaining about this mess. I drive by the place every single day, and they may say they're working on it, but I have not seen it get any better. That pile of tires is completely unacceptable, in my opinion, they should consider hiring somebody. They've been working on it, they've been working on it for how many years, and there's hundreds of tires there, you know? Take a day off, go to the landfill. If he has the equipment he says he does, they can at least get rid of that big amount of tires.
Yeah, when you had stepped out and made your call, I had mentioned that, you know, he's looking at eleven thousand five hundred dollars potential expense. And I said, for fifteen hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, you hire some people to come in and help get it done, and you're doing it for a tenth of what it could cost you, and it gets done. And that's really, I mean, we could enforce it today, and no question asked.
You know, I wonder, this is my, they don't have to answer it, but what do they want the property for? They can't live there, that, you know, that house is useless. They gonna build there? I mean, it's there because it's a garbage dump, that's what the property is being used for, it's a garbage dump. There's no other reason for it to be there right now.
There's, they've had animals in the house, they've had animals in the motorhome. There has been two times that I know of, dead cows on the north side of the house that were just left there, nothing done with them at all, and there's no reason for that.
My name's Perry Snook, I just live down the road from there. My question is, since I got that first notice of this hearing, I've noticed that a lot, a lot of those tires have just been thrown into the building, so like outside of mine, is that gonna get cleaned up too?
Well, of course it's gonna get cleaned up too, but it's like we're doing the best we can to do what we can, so we have time to get things cleaned up and stuff. And it's, you know, you act like we're all bad guys and it's sitting here and stuff, and just, a cow gets sick, sometimes it goes down and that. But legally, you cannot bury a cow in that, you can only burn it and stuff. And without having to hold the disposal, but even if we're sad.
They have rendering trucks that come and pick up dead animals all the time.
Perry, do you have one?
It's getting covered. I mean, I've noticed some progress, but it's like it's been brought up, there's, you know, too little, too late, not very fast. And I understand his position, you know, and I'm not, I'm not here to say, the heck with him, let's just clean up. I mean, I'd be more than happy to see it done by end of July, as long as there's progress made and it gets done. I know who he works for, and I know Marlon would be more than happy to say, take the truck, take the trailer, you know, and do it. The dump's open two Saturdays a month. And Marlon's got plenty of big trailers. And his yard is not that far down the road either.
Yeah, Marlon's yard from where you have to pick up the equipment?
Yep.
Is there someone else who would like to make comment?
The building's to the point now too where it's fallen down. I mean, it's collapsed, you know, so. Is that part of the deal, get rid of the building too? I mean, that could be burned, like you talked about, just bulldoze it in the hole and burn it, that would be fine too.
Your leads are covering the ordinance, at what point can I?
I don't know if it was addressed in the actual letter that was sent, the certified letter that was sent out. But if a building becomes hazardous, it does qualify as a nuisance as well. From pictures that we're taking, I mean, there's a large hole in the side of the building where-
But today, we're only looking at the tires and appliances.
Correct.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, yeah. I don't, yeah, it's just the stuff that was mentioned in the certified letter that was sent out. I do not think that was just mentioned in that letter, so. The appliances, these two appliances that are right here, they may have been moved to the back, but they weren't, I don't even think, the ones at the front there, I don't think I saw them when I drove by today. The drifts were relatively low going in, you know, going into the
The front part of the yard?
Yep, and on that south side of the yard right there. Obviously, you can't see tires with as much snow, but I, I mean, the tires have, you have to get rid of the tires, you have to get rid of the appliances. Any kind of barrel, any kind of oil drums, I see three of them on this picture right here. It doesn't matter if they're filled or not, they, there is always a chance that they could be, those need to get taken care of. Any kind of lights, I remember at one point, not, there isn't anymore, but at one point, there was just a trailer full of light bulbs. Those need to be, those need to be gone. Doesn't, I don't know if there is any anymore, just from this picture. That what used to be, I'm assuming that used to be a part of the Schwanz truck. That needs to be gone, that's, there is chemicals in there that they use to freeze, keep things frozen. The RV is pretty much encroaching onto the right of way, it's not exactly on the right of way yet. I don't know if you guys would consider that a nuisance. Either way, it doesn't have up to date tabs, if it doesn't have up to date tabs, it should be considered a nuisance. The truck there is the same exact issue, if it doesn't have up to date tabs, if the tabs aren't twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, then it needs to get taken care of. So, I mean, there's a sign, it looks like there's a sign from Burger King in the back there on that north part of the picture, on that top part of the picture. Once again, another light, it's another nuisance that needs to be taken care of. So, it's up to you guys if you want to do a timeline. If, it's up to the attorney, what you, if what you want to do, it's kind of your, into your professional opinion of if you want to take it over. But if there's a timeline, I mean, it should probably be within three to four months, and that's it.
They can't do, I mean, they can't do anything now, they can't do anything until April first, so when you say the timeline, nothing can get done till, you know?
There was some talk earlier about August first, you know, that's just a date to throw, there couldn't be any date, but that's a date, you know? And I think that gives you time to do, you know, I know summer's your busy time, but it's also at a point now where if it's not done by a certain date, it's going to be done by the county, you know, by someone that's gonna come in and do it all in a day and be done with it. Is there a date earlier than August first that you think would work, or, you know, we said-
You know, we said.
Well, I would say, let's go, give me the time limit until the end of August. And if it's not cleaned up, go ahead and do it.
I think, you know.
I mean, because with my work time, get, tries to get me to get in there where I can probably use Marty's trailer to haul more tires out and stuff like that and try to get rid of, maybe I can get it up there where Jacob can bring his truck out, uh, maybe get that big freezer on so they can dispose of it the right way. Try and get it up by the, uh, road now so he can, probably figure his big truck, I would just hook a chain on it and table and put it on the truck and give it, try to get rid of all that stuff and then work on the back.
Well, I'd say if timeline starts April first, and I'm so sure I'm ready to go to August thirty-first.
Problem is, you're not going to, you didn't agree that April, because there's still snow on the ground.
April first?
Because it varies, they can go up to Tamaia, we don't know what the snow we're going to even get yet.
Can I say one thing? I agree with Mr. Bruno. People do just dump off stuff because right now on the gravel road, somebody has dumped a dryer or something in the ditch and that's laying there. But I do agree with him, people have been dropping off something. Lloyd has had people say, where's that dump at? Lloyd will tell him it's a landfill down the road. No, 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 that's not the one.
That happened to me as well, I was out running one day and somebody asked where the dump was. And I pointed him to the landfill and finished my run and there he is dumping stuff in the yard. I think the yard, I mean, you can, you can say you're just going to get rid of the stuff that's a nuisance, but unless you get rid of everything, people are just going to start dumping stuff there again.
Yeah, because it looks like.
Because it looks like it though.
So if you start April first, say that we have ideal conditions, April first, March, April, May, June, July, August, four months. Four Saturdays a month. You could get a couple Saturdays a month out of that, so. It's up, it's up to you, but.
You're, you're looking at the option of spending eleven thousand on your, on your real estate taxes or, or spend a few hundred dollars and get somebody to help you. So that when the landfill is open, you're maximizing the hours.
If we, if we get this cleaned up, will, would we still have to pay that eleven thousand?
No, and how if you clean it up? If you don't clean it up, then, then it's going to be cleaned up for you and then the bill will come to you. But no, if you clean it up in a timely fashion, then.
And if you, if they're saying thing that you guys need, you're coming clean after we get done, would it?
If you're not, if you clean up half of it and then the rest would be charged to you.
You would, they have the eleven thousand there?
Uh, it would be assessed at that time what the cost, you know, if you get most of it cleaned up and there's not that much left, but it still needs to be cleaned up, it's probably not an eleven thousand dollar cleanup at that point.
Right, it might be four or five.
It's going to be assessed. There's going to be an actual cost, I think, is what it's going to be. Is that right, Don, is that the way you understand it?
That's correct, so even though eleven thousand, that's an estimate.
Just a guess, that's, it could be less, could be more.
I'd say your biggest expense is the tires, my thoughts are pop.
So we need to come to a agreement today? If anyone else like to make a comment before we close with the public comment? Then we'll close with a time of public comment.
Well, I think it's important that, that some of the neighbors are here because they're hearing it being discussed. And, and if, when we put a date as to the cleanup date, then you know that there's a plan of action and if it's not done by that date, that the county will probably within thirty days be out there cleaning it up. And the bill will be, you know, come back to you folks, whatever, whatever hasn't gotten done, so. I guess it's up for us as a committee to, to pick that date and Alex will go out and take an aerial view and visual inspection and we'll go from there.
Well, the rest you think is fair, what, how much time?
That's.
Four months. I think four months is fair.
I think.
Yeah. Like, is there an exception because there might be too much snow yet that, that we go on or?
Tis kind of sort of.
I would say don't throw an exception, my opinion would say, don't throw an exception, if you think that there's going to be more snow, then just push it another thirty days. Or just a clean cut, clean cut either August first or August thirtieth.
What do you want?
You can split a month. Go two weeks into it and call it August fifteenth.
Okay, and then there won't, there won't be any grace period or anything like that.
Exactly, so that August fifteenth is a date you can, I know, I know you'd like as much time as you could get, you, you'd probably like, you know, another year, but we're not going to do that.
No, I'm saying another year, but no, the problem is, you're cutting my time limit with the snow on the ground where I can't say, okay, April fifteenth I can, or even April I can get in it. It might be until May before you can get in and do anything. And so how do you put your time limit on something?
On the ground before then, I don't get to get in.
But, yes, I will do my best and we'll go with the time limit.
Three, you know, if you can't start April first, you know, if it's April fifteenth, that's four months.
Yeah.
Of time.
Or an extra two weeks.
And we also want, you know, if, if we set it too late in the year and then, and then the county, we, we want this done by the end of the calendar year for sure, so it's not, we can't say October thirtieth and then we get snow and the county can't even get in and clean it up till the following spring, we're not doing that.
We would, we, uh, we need to recognize that, we need to do a bidding process and then the availability of
Sure.
contractors, so you do, yeah, you don't want to cut yourself short where you can't get something done.
And that process takes, is thirty days to get that kind of process?
Well, you're looking at more because I'd like to get a court order authorized because and that would take thirty, sixty days, sixty days probably.
Boy, sixty days.
Another, you know, just an idea or okay, if we get all this cleaned up and somebody starts after August fifteenth, somebody else starts bringing more stuff in, what happens then?
Well, that's where he's told us that we should get all the cops so they can come take pictures and then, you know, let them know what's going on, that, that we have proof that somebody dumped something out there, there's pictures and.
And if you have, you know, when you have it cleaned up, August, we're going to say you're going to get done by August first, you're going to be ahead of schedule. Call Alex so he can come and look and take a picture.
Yes.
That way, when something does get dumped down there, you know, it's.
As soon as it's done, yeah.
Just the thought that somebody might.
Right, yeah. Those, those are some of those hypotheticals that we're, you know, we can't, we can't, we don't know, so.
Yeah, I don't know, you can't say all that part, but I'm just asking or suggesting that somebody might.
It's an unfortunate thing that the, the history is there to, that some people just say, oh yeah, go out to there and dump it, you know, versus driving two miles or three miles further to get to the landfill and do it the right way.
Just like certain ditches you drive by, there's garbage in the ditch and certain roads, you know, it's just where people go to dump their garbage, it's, um, it's, it's, it's gotten a reputation for a place to dump and so once it gets cleaned up and stays cleaned up, that reputation will go away.
So are you thinking August fifteenth is fair?
I'll go with that. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that, uh, we will grant the landowner of said property to have until August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three to address the cleanup that has been noted. And after that, the county will proceed with cleanup on it and assess the property. That be the way to state it now?
Yeah, um, instead of cleanup, you can use a bait nuisance, but that's, that's the crux of it, absolutely.
The move is seconded. Did you get that?
Eighty-second?
Yep, eighty-second, and the motion you have, um, where Norm put it?
Yeah, um, the motion, we have until August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and it is not complete and the county is, that work for you?
August fifteenth to evade the nuisance. Authorized.
The county will evade the nuisance.
If not complete.
By August thirteenth, the county will evade the nuisance.
The county will evade the nuisance, got it?
Authorized, it's the steps necessary to evade the nuisance.
And I'll, I'll make sure to send the letter out to the same exact mayor and list, so everyone's aware of the situation. Um, I think that's going to be a good thing that everyone's aware of that, or not keeping anyone in the dark, so.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion? Are you done? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? That motion carries. Do you understand the August fifteenth is the date?
August fifteenth is the date, you guys come in and start cleaning after that if it's not done.
And then you pay, you pay for it either way.
Yeah.
You do it yourself, you pay for it, the county does it, you pay for it. Anything else on this that we need to discuss now? On this one? This public, um, public hearing is adjourned. Thank you all, coming today?